We're ready.
All right, well, good evening and welcome to our budget workshop. To get things started, since I don't know everybody yet, we thought we'd do introductions. And we're going to go around this way and then we'll, we'll finish with Linda, who then can kind of get us started through the process. So I'm Dan Bush, I'm the superintendent. I started here on July 1st and maybe briefly your connection or affiliation to the district. As you go around so that I can, that will help me remember who you are and your names and whatnot. So we'll go around the room this way. Diane.
I'm Diane Loach, I am the school board secretary and assistant to the superintendent.
I'm Jenny Scott, I'm a board member.
Heidi Torin, board members. And I just was thinking, Kelsey and I were just talking about how it's been a year since we were sitting here interviewing you.
Oh, wow.
And I just thought of that when I put this shirt on because I wore this shirt. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But anyway, it's not fast and I just could say I'm more than pleased about everything.
Oh, thank you.
Kelsey Newker, board member. I've got three kiddos in my high school and graduated from my frame. I said my parents and my grandparents.
Glenn Holam, board member since seventeen, maybe, hasn't seventeen. Former alumni, graduated in ninety-one. Have four kids graduated from here, so.
Merle Stetson, board of directors, longtime resident of the district, going on staff.
Jimmy Alby, I currently have two grandchildren in the North Grace School system. I myself went through fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grades here many years ago. And I've worked with various fire districts that have covered in various positions, also on, on budget committees and. Sweet connection.
I'm Jim Jones, I have four children in the school district and I love serving in our school. I think it's a wonderful place, a great place for our kids to be.
Mike Williams, neighbor for thirty years, I live down Fry Road. No kids, no relatives, everyone's at school here, so I'm unencumbered.
I'm Jill Fosser, my, I grew up on Fry Road. Parents have lived there for thirty-nine years. I am a K-12 alumni of the district as are my parents. And I have a son in the district, a daughter in the district, and I'm a spouse, do an educator in the district.
Jill, what's your parents' last name?
Look here.
Oh, I went to school with Danny, not Danny, Trace, Terry, Terry?
Terry, my mom.
Terry, but she, she's married to?
Ken. And she worked here for a while.
We're just doing introductions.
Okay, I'm Stacy Miller, I've got two kids in the high school and I'm a business owner. We farm hazelnuts down the road and, yeah.
Sorry, sorry for being late. No problem, it's a busy time of year for everyone.
I'm Linda Murray, I'm the business manager here, been here for about twenty-four years. This is my last year, so I will be retiring June thirtieth. I have two boys that graduated from here, one is a teacher at the high school and I have two grand children. That's the district, we've lived in this area for a long, long time. It's in my blood, that's for sure.
Just also to note that Emily Hammer is trying to get on Zoom, so we're trying to kind of communicate that to her.
Okay. I can't do it here, so. I am.
Diane.
Okay, all right, um, do we want to give it a minute or shall we just go? Um, I think I would just go ahead and get started because it's recorded, she can catch up. And she got this earlier, so. So as many of you know, this has been a very challenging year for putting a budget together. We at North Marion, along with many districts in the state, have to do reduction. Tightening and cuts and looked at ways to save money to present a balanced budget, which we'll do next week. So I wanted to walk you through, this is a little bit different format than what it's been in the past, but I kind of wanted to walk you through how this really got punched holes in these because you'll get a binder and if you want to keep them, you can put them in the binder, so. The very first bullet point is on page, oh, I punched holes in the pages, page one. Is enrollment trends and Jay was nice enough to point out that I have a problem already. Since two thousand fifteen, sixteen is what it should read, enrollment has dropped by four hundred and twenty-seven students. We are graduating a hundred and thirty-five and only ninety incoming kindergarteners are what we're estimating. Though, that's where most of our problem is coming from for funding. Because we continue to go down, we get about eleven thousand dollars a student. So for every four and five students, it's about a half million dollars. So we've been looking at that and it's been trending that way for a while. We have a fail-safe built into the way they fund school. So you get the higher of your prior year ADMW, which is average daily membership weighted, or the current, whichever is higher. That fail-safe has been keeping us going for a while, but our fail-safe between this current year and next year is only ten students. So that's a hundred thousand dollars, that's not going to get us there. So we need to be thinking about that as we go through this budget balance, that's in a budget two years. And we have been thinking about this since, I've been thinking about this since at least December, around the rest since January. So it's, it's heavy on our minds. You know, this is a trend that's happening, we have fewer children being born, fewer kindergarteners coming in. It's, it's happening across the state and the country, it's, it's where we're at. So we have to look at a little longer term of how we're going to take care of this. The funding challenges we're having, the eleven point three five nine billion, which is what we have allocated at the moment, and that's what our state school fund estimates have been based on, are, we are being told are all we're going to get in that bucket. We have a revenue forecast coming out May fourteenth for the state. There's been no movement at the legislature with any bills that had any, had any funding tied to it for about ten days because they're waiting for that revenue forecast. We have a lot of federal uncertainty and whether or not that funding will come in or not makes a big difference statewide. So we have to watch all these little different pieces, some little, some big. And it makes it hard to budget, but we all have to have one done, approved and adopted by June thirtieth. So we, we keep moving forward and do our best. A good friend of mine has always said, a budget is good for about one day and then something changes. For me, it's as good as the day you've maybe printed, but something has already changed. And some things have already changed here, so we'll, we'll do the best we can with what we know at the moment. So as all of you know, we've made some staff reductions. This spreadsheet says we have thirty-two physicians reduced, including three administrative, eighteen licensed, ten eleven classified physicians. We, that's a combination of RIFs, retirements, attrition type stuff, resignations. And we had had some staff that were contracted employees because we couldn't get anyone to apply for certain jobs, mostly IAs throughout the district. So those will not be brought back unless we have an opening or two. When we got, when everything was said and done, we do have one or two openings, so there will be a couple physicians posted. The reduction force was not, did not hit the classified because of those contracted employees, basically. So they did not have any reductions as far as current people, they may have a different position, but they're still here. Program cuts that are happening for next year are cross-country swimming, the awesome program, changes to the instructional leadership and the way we do that. Tagging implementation will be changing. The OBOF coordinator at the grades three through five and some electives, including middle school arts, high school arts and computer science programs are also affected by this. This budget is being built with a three percent contingency, which is way down from the four and a half the year before and the six percent that the board would like. But in these times, it's hard to budget with a little more than that. What you'll see from me when I bring it to you Monday, the nineteenth, might be a little bit different. And we'll hear why as we go down this. We don't want to not mention that our unions made concessions by foregoing tuition reimbursement and personal leave buyback and two for furlough days in this current year. Those were things that did help balance the budget, think as to where we're at. To continue with this, I gave you some more numbers. The financial impact and what that could do because of our enrollments. If you're going down forty-five to sixty-five kids in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's four hundred and eighty-five to seven hundred thousand dollars. If you add that to twenty-seven, twenty-eight with, which also looks like we're going down, that's almost a million to a million point four thousand dollars, so a million dollars. So it's, this is a problem that's going to continue. This is not, unless we can turn it around and find ways to bring kids back, maybe an online program or a charter school or something like that. This is going to continue here and in many districts across the state. It's something that I hear from all of my peers right now. There's about four that say, sorry, I don't have your problem. The rest are all in this boat, so we, we're going to work as hard as we can to make it the best we can and the least impactful to our students and our staff. I don't think I need to read everything here. The potential funding sources that may be coming in are things that I really, I want to chat, talk about tonight. When we got our first estimates for this, for this biennium, they, they went up about ten percent. We have a couple buckets for first tier one and tier two people and ops or people we sometimes refer to as tier three. Those percentage has, percentages have been very low. Our ops are actually with zero because we have some side accounts. That went up to eight point seven nine percent and our tier one and tier two was about one point three eight percent and went up to twelve percent. So when you put that together, that was about a one point four million dollar cost to the district without changing anything. Now that was based on the staff we had at the time. We're not funding that many staff, so the cost is not going to be quite as great, but it's still a big, a big deal for North Marion. So they have, there's a bill in the legislature that I believe the governor just signed, but the actuarial for PERS has to run the numbers, so we should find out any day, maybe by the end of this week, what our numbers actually will change to and what that might save us. I believe it's going to be around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that will save us district-wide. The other piece is because of everything we've done and you'll see that on, on a few pages in there. With our, we, we close off purchase orders early. We asked staff to not spend any money if they could help it, we got those two furlough days and made all those reductions in staff. With that, the, the budget at the moment is balanced with about three hundred thousand more than a three percent contingency. So keep, keep these numbers, they're going to keep building until I get to the end. There's a potential for some changes in sped costs or sped funding from the state. High-cost disability, which is now funded at maybe forty percent of what you spend. So we get money for every thirty thousand dollars over that a student has, that costs us. And we have students that cost us eighty and ninety thousand dollars, okay? But the difference, say it's eighty thousand, that difference of fifty thousand, we might only get forty percent of that fifty thousand. So we might get twenty thousand more for that student instead of them, but they've already cost us thirty. And we get about eleven thousand per student, now there might be another weight in that. The other thing is there's a, an IEP weight of eleven percent that's been with the state for forever. That's what every district gets. Most people have around fifteen percent sped student populations and so we're not getting the full weight anyway to begin with. And then you have all these high-cost students that cost to get involved. So they're looking at ways to help that, there's been talk. Maybe that'll be about two hundred million for the biennium, so a hundred million or if they do it forty-nine, fifty-one, we really don't know how they'll split it. But that could mean, I'm thinking about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty, sixty thousand for my, I don't know for sure. We may not have these answers till way later June, we're going to have to adopt a budget knowing we don't have the, all the answers. I, I always say, put the numbers in, but you're not spending till you see it. That way your appropriations are there, so you can spend it if they do come in. So what we're watching and considering are any other cost-cutting measures we can come up with? We'll be looking at, or maybe not we, the district, how's that?
That's good.
I'm not going to be. I will encourage the district to look at transportation, if they can cut the route, won't you? Routes cost us quite a bit a year, we spend over two million dollars on busing for special education and the regular routes. And we do get seventy percent of that back, but we're still spending about thirty, thirty percent. And that's all part of your state school fund, so it just gets baked in there, it isn't like somebody gives that check for seventy percent of two million dollars, so. We're continuing to align staff into enrollment and we have to continue to do that. We're thinking of maybe considering developing targeted programs to attract and retain students. We're worried about the federal uncertainty and what will happen there. The latest we heard is that we should be flat-funded for our Title I and IDVA funding. IDVA has to do the special education. We fund about twelve to sixteen staff with that money. If it's flat-funded, okay, at least I can maybe do ten to fourteen. So if it's flat, that doesn't account for the purse increase, it doesn't account for the cost of living increases we've given, it doesn't tend to count for the staff increases that are all in our students, are all of our staff. So those are, those are big things. The biggest thing that everyone at the state level is laboring all my counterparts is the state school fund or the revenue forecast coming out of the budget. So whether that's going to be positive, flat or negative is going to make a difference as to what we get in, maybe some of these other pockets I've talked about, like the high-cost disability and the eleven percent rate. So we'll see where that goes. The next spreadsheet is just a graph, but I want you to see that the difference in our enrollment, this is just in enrollment, this isn't with weights or anything. This is where the number of students, official enrollment, October one of any given year.
So I think some might be looking at this page.
Did I not get that page myself? Oh, I didn't, sorry, sorry. Sorry, we are. So the, this is how we develop the general fund budget and that's the fund we, we are worried about the most because it funds most things at the district. So in January, when I came to the board, the administrators and when Dan and I went to all the staff, we were two point eight million in the hole with the current staff that we had and all of the things that I already talked about. So with what we thought enrollment would be and everything, we were two point eight. So then if you go over to the kind of the tannish, I don't know, orangish, salmony color, the estimated budget for February, March of two thousand twenty-five, that's after our staff said, yes, we'll give you two furlough days. We won't ask for purse, or for personal leave buyback. We did all the RIFs, we're not adding back all this staff, then we're at about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars ahead of the game. That feels better, things keep moving, things keep changing. At that time, I thought that our beginning fund balance would be two point one million, which will be, it means that's this year's ending fund balance, four point five rolls into next year as money, okay? Then we got some bad news from the state and things got ugly and I thought, well, we're probably only going to have one point seven million. But we had other changes, other things came on, less, less, more savings throughout the district in cost-cut, cutting measures, those sorts of things, more changes with, with staff. So then at late April, I was thinking we were about four hundred thousand ahead of ourselves. And we had some more changes, so now I'm saying we have about six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's with that three hundred thousand I already talked about and this is there. We had some more changes that cost us more money or that would have been more like a seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Basically, everything on this page will change by the time you see it next month. That's just how it goes. We were given another ant, three hundred thousand dollars just this last week. And we just basically heard about it Thursday or Friday of last week. So that will change the number of FTE, we will, we will probably hire one person for that. We haven't looked exactly how that's going to work out, but those are the things that just change, just when you open your email. So that's, that's where we're at. So now we are to the enrollment page, so this is what I'm trying to hammer home, I guess, is the enrollment expected from two thousand twenty-five, which would be October one through two thousand twenty-nine? If it continues the way it is, we're just going to keep going. So what can we do to change that or save that? I'm not going to go through the official enrollment, this is my grade level if anybody is interested, but it gives you a good idea of how you can see where in two thousand twenty-four, we got eighty-nine kindergarteners and a hundred and thirty-five seniors. You're gonna, you're not, not going to bring in the same amount of money every year if that keeps happening and we're expecting that. Right now, the enrollment for kindergarten is one more than last year at this time. Looks like it will be about any year again, so the same idea where you're going to have a senior class of a hundred and fifty-two. So that's going to, again, that's going to be even higher next time, more like sixty, year to year, unless we can figure out something. We've done a lot of staffing work and I think I pretty much summarized it in the beginning of this. We take the staff that we have at a certain point in time, I took December, rolled it forward and that's how I came up with our numbers. That's when we said, we can't do this, we're going to be broke, we are broke, let's do something about it. And so that's when we started all of this work with the administrators and talking to the buildings and all sorts of things. We do have, under that section that says what this looks like for North Marion. So we're budgeting thirty-two less now tomorrow, or when you see this next week, it might be thirty-one less because we're going to have one more because of that grant. We have prioritization lists created for staff Advax. Dan worked really hard with the administrators to see, okay, these are the cuts we've made. What would you prefer in your building to have added that first and second and third and fourth and on so on? So if we can get to a point where we believe we can add one or two people back, that those priorities will be taken into consideration.
And as Linda said earlier, we also keep a really close eye on our enrollment. We know we have some pockets in other places and sometimes it's, it's wise to hold off until, it's not always easy, but sometimes it's wiser to hold off until August when you actually start, when people, you know, start paying attention to enrolling their kids if they've moved here or have a kindergartner. So sometimes it's not great for planning, but it's better to apply that FTE or that person where you know you have a bubble at a, at a grade level. So that might be something you hear later.
The next graph is just a comparison of, a comparison of the, our enrollment since fifteen sixteen, which was our highest enrollment. And then your staffing and then the change and then basically the staffing ratio, this is all staff to our students. And the fact that it was nine point three five back then, went down to seven, seven, two and now we're looking at seven, seven, four. So it's just information for you guys. The next page is, is the staff reduction of those thirty-two I talked about and where they came from and how that looks and what kind of percentage that was. You don't need to go into any more detail on that. The following graph is associated payroll costs, I'm sorry, the font's not the same, but life goes no way to get this perfect. And I wanted to give enough years on here to, to show. But when the associated payroll costs go up, it's usually due to PERS. Everything else doesn't fluctuate that much, but PERS is what hurts every time it puts. And we're at a hit stage for a few years now according to PERS. So we're at this projecting to be forty-three and forty percent, it may go down, both of those numbers. That includes everything, that's PERS and social security and unemployment and paid leave organ and all those things. But it may go down each of those by one point six eight percent. That's something, so this will hit down the market.
Where would that one point six eight percent come from?
Where does it come from?
Yeah, so that might be one point six eight percent less.
Every staff member that's a PERS member, the cost to us would be one point six eight less for their PERS portion.
So that's a number given to you by PERS.
That's the number that the legislature and their PERS people put out right now, that's the bill that just got signed and we're waiting to see if it's really going to be to my state. But one of the things that makes it harder for North Marion than anybody else that has a PERS side account, which is a bond we took out to pay off the unfunded liability. Sometimes that side account, always not sometimes, affects the numbers. So where somebody else might be paying forty-eight percent because of our side account, we're paying eighty-three total, the social payroll cost. So that savings will be there. That might be a place that we hold off because of our declining enrollment and just hold on to it and say, you know what, we budgeted for this, we know it's not going to happen, but we're not going to spend it either because of the declining enrollment and the fact that we believe will be at least five hundred thousand, half a million short. There were other, there were other budget work that you guys, if you saw this earlier, I reviewed this already, but you know, some of the criteria we used for extracurricular was what kind of enrollment, what kind of numbers do we have? What kind of participation? How, how many students would it affect if we cut this program? And Title IX considerations, is participation maybe trending up? And so maybe we wouldn't cut that program, but the ones we listed are the ones that we were very, very low and made sense to say, we're not paying a stipend for that, we're not going to run that program next year. Not saying that it can't change the following year, that it's something that we worked, we worked on and have, have the budget from now. I've already mentioned, I believe, all the rest of that. The next two pages are the state school fund estimates for twenty-three, twenty-four, which we just got the final number on April twenty-ninth for them. So I actually wouldn't mind you looking at just the little page. So it tells you when we first get our first estimate in February of two thousand twenty-three, so a whole two years plus earlier. They're using estimated numbers, they're using the teacher experience that's wrong, everything on it is basically wrong. And then you get to your actual numbers when everybody gets done with all their reporting and then you can see what those numbers might be. The ADMR for the state was lower than they expected, the weight was lower than they expected, which means that your funding ratio is going to go up because it's still the same bucket of money they're, they're putting out for all those six hundred to five hundred and thirty thousand kids. So the next page is a a graph that shows you what our state school fund was going to be for twenty-three, twenty-four over that two-year period and you can see, it's crazy. North Marion has about a thirty percent of the state school fund. Some of these numbers, when they gave them to us, were wrong and they told us that right away, some of them were correct. But then a big district went, oh, I made a big mistake and then that affects North Marion because we're just a third of a percent. So just, I thought it would be interesting for you guys to see it and hand back to them. The next page is similar, it's the twenty-four, twenty-five and where we're at so far. So I haven't built a graph, but it's just figuring, you can see there's fluctuation all the time. This is where I wanted to talk about the fail-safe though, if you look at the estimate under April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, the blue section where a greater of current or prior year, well, that difference is only six kids, that's not much money. Sixty, seventy thousand dollars, where before we had a difference of forty and fifty. That's big money that they're still letting you work off of and now that has changed quite a bit, so. And now that has changed quite a bit, so. I like to keep this page in here, it's the contingency and flash ending fund balance history because it's, it's been going for a long time, how much this has fluctuated. OSBA, different boards, all want a different amount, but it's, it's always been a hope of mine to have one month's worth of bills in contingency. We didn't, we're not anywhere close. We're, our one month's bills right now, I think it's 2.2, probably be a little less next year because of all the spin-off reductions, but we're at about $770,000, so that's not even close. One or two bad things happen, and you're going to be really tight with that money, so. But I also don't think that it's appropriate to say we need to keep a 6% or 10% or that 1% or that one month's contingency when we're making cuts to spend. So I think, you know, the board agreed with that, we can build our budget on the 3% and so. Just so you know, the numbers at the bottom half are an estimate. And if our budget was 25 million, it's not going to be exact 25 million, but that 3% will be at least that, you know, put the budget out. This is just information that at some point, the state asked me if I included this in any budget workshops or meetings, and I'm going to say, yes, I did. It kind of gives you an idea, though. Years ago, we did not have that many staff members budgeted out of grants, whether they were state or federal, and now we're up to 47 total FTE we are budgeting through as grants. You used to kind of go, hmm, it's only 10 or 15 people. If we're okay, we'll just worry about general fund. You have to worry about it all, because it's a, it's a big one. Then there's information about high school success that is trending down money-wise because that's based on enrollment. So we'll see how that holds up. Student investment account is still a good-sized one. It is probably going to be less, but there's a couple of numbers out there for most of these, and that's the governor's budget and the Ways and Means Committee. Ways and Means, and they don't, they're not the same right now. So we're just waiting until May 14th, basically, to see what's going to happen. We, once May 14th hits, does not mean we'll get an answer on May 15. They have to do a lot of work, so hopefully by June 1st, we might know that. We'll see, that's pretty hopeful, how about June 15? Then a final page that's got a lot on it is the ESSER funds, the ESSER summary. This is something that we have to have in our document to show where our ESSER funds were spent over the years. You can see this began in 2020 and went through September of 2024. But it just is the balance of what was spent and how it was spent and all of that. I want to point out that we did the HVAC project at the intermediate school to a tune of about a little over a million dollars, but that has been really good for us. We, we were fixing one, two, and three units every time the electricity went off. So we were spending a lot of money. So hopefully with that ESSER money, we're in good shape. So our next steps, we're going to complete the budget document, or I am. And this page didn't, I have a different page that didn't get printed, but okay. Let's see if I can remember all that I'm going to say. No, no, I just had three bullet points, start from pretty much about. Again, the revenue forecast is coming out, we may get the first relief, we may get some progress on high-cost disability appropriations and the IED cap percentage. And then the federal uncertainty started to clear up. It was really good to get the Title I and IDEA because those, as you saw in the earlier draft, are where we funded all the staff. So nice to know they're not going to cut it because originally they said we'll cut that 20%. So that would be even more. I believe it would be prudent for us to put a reserve for next year in my budget, of about a half a million dollars. Because with our declining enrollment, if we don't, we'll be right back in the same position next year where we'll be cutting staff. I don't think our staff wants to do that, I think we want to be as prepared as we can for that. So if any of these things come through, the first relief, which we know is coming through, we just don't know what the amount is for North Marion, the high-cost disability, the IED cap, and that, the extra about $300,000 that I have above the 3% I think. That could be $600,000, $700,000, I think a half a million of that should be in the reserve. The rest could go into a contingency or could be budgeted for a couple of staff where things might be the best place. So that's what I'll propose to you on next Monday night, so that we are in a better situation next year and not bleeding again like some districts who did this last year and are doing it again this year. That's not the situation we want to be in. So I talked a long time, I'll take any questions.
I have a question. So just to be clear, that reserve, reserve that you're talking about would be separate from our contingency and with that percentage? And how would you designate that?
There's a totally different account number for that, and you can spend that if you put a new reserve.
Okay, can't spend it?
Can't.
Could you spend it if you had an action by the board?
Not the reserve, but you can spend the contingency, even that 3%, you have the 766 or more.
Yeah.
Wherever that ends, that you can spend.
Kind of new at this definitions, ESSER, E-S-S-E-R?
Those are code.
COVID money, and it means every student seeks a tax. No, there's more.
That was, no. Elementary, secondary success act, yeah.
Something, something.
Okay, so it was the COVID relief money that came in three different phases.
Okay. And so the idea was to take our students and kind of bring them back in the school system and educate them with the extra money to get their scores back up?
It was a mixture of a lot of different things. So it came out even while we were in distance, sorry.
I'm assuming that was the purpose of it?
It was, it was a variety of different purposes in each phase of that. So, so some of the earlier phases were to do some HVAC. So part of it was getting ventilation, so the buildings would be safer, so you'd have better, some of it was for all the PPE, all the air purifiers. And then as the different phases came through and you got to like ESSER 3, then it started becoming, how do we, how do we get kids back from being out of school for so long? But the bulk of it early on was really about your infrastructure and trying to improve the air quality. Is that your recollection?
So much, yeah.
Close.
The ESSER 3 could be used for anything, to continue education in any way, shape, or form that was normal. So that opened up the world, and then you had to spend it by September 30th of 2024. And so therefore, last year, those that were on the board remember me talking about the fact that we shifted some of the cost of some of our staff to ESSER to spend it out in time, leaving enough to finish that HVAC project. So, but that money is all gone, and that, that's part of the issue for a lot of schools. We didn't rely on it to fund the staff on a regular year basis.
Similar to the, our regular funds. And so these programs, awesome program.
There you go.
And that was for, is that, you're cutting it out, what, what was the students doing?
Very low enrollment at the high school.
I know, but so the, so what was this funds being spent on? I mean, was it like a, an advanced education or?
No, a stipend for a staff member to run the program.
Okay.
So, and I, I would say that it was in the 5,000 or under range as far as that with the, I don't have the numbers on top of my head, but it was, it's not a lot.
Well, the after-school program that, so the reduction was for a stipend to pay a staff member to run the program.
And the program was for?
I believe it was, it was at high school and this high school.
Yeah, for drug awareness and healthy awareness procedures.
I wonder if it said health insurance not included, very well.
Yeah, for those associated payroll costs that are 40-ish percent, we don't include what we can on a monthly basis for health insurance, which next year will be $1,590 per person per month if they take.
Is that in here somewhere?
It will be when you see your numbers on salaries and benefits.
So that has to be fair, okay.
So that's why a lot of times you'll see the cost of a classified staff member, maybe they only work six hours, but they get full insurance. When you put their associated payroll costs, it's almost as much or is as much as the salary or the wage that they make.
The health insurance controlled by the state.
I mean, it's a state program or, but the, the amount is negotiated. The, the amount the district pays is negotiated with each group.
With each group?
Union group.
Union group. But that is typically one, and in most districts, you'll see the rates usually pretty consistent for both groups, and that's how it is here.
And we expect that to be stable for this next year?
So it went up by $70 a month, so it was 1520 was?
Yes, you're right.
1520, and it's gone up to 1590 and 2526.
And our transportation cost is reimbursed in front of the tax.
State level.
In the state, which gets their money from the tax.
A lot of their money, yes. The trend, so North Marion's reimbursement rate is 70%, which is what most districts in the state are. But the outliers like Joseph and Notice that busts their kids forever, they might get 90% reimbursed because their cost is outrageous compared to ours as far as per student if you broke that that. So everybody's a little bit different, but I believe the lowest is 70% of this. It could be 60, I, I don't know.
Since the Department of Education is limited, can we expect the transportation reimbursement to continue? Or are we concerned?
I'm not concerned about transportation because it's all tied into the state school fund, and they've sat that at 11.56.
I don't see the transportation funds that are not coming from the federal level. So any federal cuts would not be coming in transportation.
So the state's got to cover it.
The state is currently covering it and would need to continue to cover that.
Okay, and they're only a few billion in the hole. Your fail-safe, I agree, six students is nothing. This half a million, you talked about setting aside for next year, will that be in the fail-safe category?
It'll be in a category called reserve for next year, and like I said, we can't spend it. But the contingency, that 3% or whatever that number turns out to be, let's say it's $750,000, it can be sent if something changes or happens.
We're only allowed to save so much money on a budget filled by the state, aren't we?
No.
Now, we can save more than the state?
There's certain, we have certain programs like our food service who don't like you to have more than three months' worth of the cost of doing that, running that program. But they, you, you can explain why you do, like maybe you needed to replace four ovens, and so we have a little more or whatever it is. But that, because that's a federal grant, you can't, you can't hold on to that for longer periods of time.
And you can't make reductions, reductions in special education to, for the most part, you have something that's called maintenance of effort that you have to maintain. So if you're looking at making across-the-board reductions, you, you don't really look at special education very closely because of the requirements that are what's called maintenance of effort, which our team's done a really good job of, of making sure we're, we're within that.
And was there a ratio now between student teachers? Didn't understand that.
So this isn't student to teachers, this is student to staff. I would happily look at the student to teacher, but I'd say that, Dave, I think you're thinking around 28 to 30 for grade level next year? Yeah, and this year it was?
319.1.
Yeah, so we're going to go up. They reduced a staff member at each grade.
What, what determines by the name of a fund, whether it can be spent or not spent? Who determines or what determines? You said budget reserved for next year, you could not spend?
That will be in the general fund in an account code that is not available.
Is that the district's decision that it's not spendable?
Well, I think it ultimately would be the board, you know, the budget committee will approve a budget that the board will then vote on. And so that is, would be the recommendation that we would be coming with to have an amount set aside in an account that cannot be spent. But ultimately.
That's all for the general fund. You, you can reserve in other funds, but the other funds pretty much are spoken for. You know, if there's a reason, there's a fund for food service, there's a reason, there's a fund for Title I and IDEA, and you can only spend it on certain things. So you would never have a reserve in Title I or IDEA. That's, they don't allow that.
What happens if you do not need to spend some of those designated funds? Did they carry it over?
You've mentioned Title I. Some, some grants have a carryover for their whole year. IDEA does, Title I does, most of the title grants usually. With the federal uncertainty that we have, I have no idea if that'll continue. Let's just say that out loud, I have no idea. It's been allocated to the states now, so I believe we'll still have a carryover next year at least.
Earlier this year, there was talk about reduction, not reductions in staff, but, but, concessions, I suppose, by the union to aid the budget for this year. And I was thinking next year too, and I remember some conversation about those conversations for next year as far as like maybe additional furloughs or additional. Have those been considered yet, or is that next year's budget, next year's problem? And when, do you know when new contract negotiations are, when that would be?
The license negotiations will start next spring. And the classified just ended and we have a three-year contract. That you can always open a contract if you're having financial worries and talk about those things. Those are not things we're talking about right now as far as.
We have not talked about any of those things like Linda just said for 2526, except what has already been agreed upon, which is freezing the tuition reimbursement and the no buyback of personal days. But those other aspects that we talked about, maybe January, February, we have not been discussing with either union since.
Are you concerned about Measure 98 money since, oh yeah, they fund so much? So like, because that's a state, right?
Yeah, and it's based on your enrollment and, right? Next year, your enrollment at the high school looks good, the following years, it's going to start to trickle down. So it's based on your enrollment at that grade level, this high school assessment. So you, if your enrollment holds steady, it shouldn't go down too much. But it's also funded through a tax, I can't think of it right now. The cat tax.
The corporate activity?
No, the corporate activity tax, so depending on where that lands, that can change. If we go into recession, the amount available for those funds might not be the same.
What does the next contracts do for both our unions?
Well, the, the license goes through June of 2026, and the classified goes through June of 2028. Yeah, so.
So we'll start bargaining next spring with the teachers and then for a couple more years, the classified.
Right. Yeah, at least they're not the same time.
We try for that.
We really do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a re opener for the classified in the third year of the contract to do with salaries and two articles of choice by each group. So, so there'll be some negotiating that third year, it just.
The classified is a small comparison to the.
Not that small.
Not that small.
Eighty some people. Yeah, licensed during our 105 right here. Looks like we're estimating 97 licensed, then 89 classified. So the difference is not that much. So the difference is not that much.
From the categories.
Yeah.
Are we over? Spending on classified jurisdictions?
I don't think so, but.
No.
No. We, I mean, we, we need our secretaries to keep the front office welcoming and helping students, custodians, and then. Food service staff. Service staff, um, and then we have a lot of those uh, RIAs work with our special needs students and perform a lot of different functions there, so. And that's, it's not uncommon to almost have a fifty-fifty in terms, you know, percentage of licensed and classified that's not altogether uncommon. Since we're, we're pretty close to that.
Sure.
Anybody else?
One more definition?
Sure.
Yeah. O B O. O B O.
O B O, Oregon Battle of the Books. So another after-school club does a lot of different competitions, a lot of competitions within their school. And then can go to some more regional or state competitions. And so that was just an area of that particular grade level where participation wasn't, wasn't as high. So again, another after-school stipend that was reduced.
Um.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question on, like, when it comes to sports or activities, is there a minimum student engagement required? Or like, kind of what you're thinking, like, swimming and cross crunching were cut because I don't know how many students were in there, but.
I think we kind of looked at ten students.
At ten and under and then looked at Title IX considerations and is the enrollment going up now or is it trending down? And he knows that's how we look at it, for not just athletics, but for all the activities.
And if we find that something actually come. Like for next year, if we actually have a lot of interest in an activity or sport, we would implement that again? Or if there's not as much as we thought there would, would be, we be cutting or looking at, are you seeing that? I don't know, those are just.
I think, I think those are all good questions that we would have to look at, basically, huh?
Yeah, I think if there's a little bit more healthier contingency, could we look at an interest to these programs that we've reduced? I think that's a fair question. I think eliminating programs mid-year is hard for kids. We've made commitments to leagues. There's other, other factors to take into consideration before just, just removing something.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that, you know, our decisions that we've made for right now, that we've been making for the last three months, were the right decisions.
Yeah.
And if we can build up that contingency to, you know, could we assess the interest level, let's say, in cross-country?
Yeah.
Could we get into league competitions and things like that? We could, we could examine that. If we, if we feel like we have a contingency that can support that stipend.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Hey, I need at least eight of you that want to vote yes on a budget on May nineteenth to show up here. So let's hope you guys are doing very good. Um, in the meantime, I'll be putting the budget book together. I will probably send it to you electronically. You won't get a hard copy probably until the day of the meeting, unless I get it done. Early Thursday, then I'll probably give it to you, but I will see. Okay, um, what I've done in the past is if they are ready, I'll send out an email and say stop by the district office and pick it up. If you would like, for me, a hard copy's easier to read than. Uh, that, the budget, for those that haven't been on my budget committee, is about a hundred and fifty pages or more. So it's not something that you want to keep pouring over. I would say usually the first thirty pages are the most important. All right. Thank you, Linda. Yes.
You want to, seven, seven one five?
Yeah, can we take a break?
Well, the board meeting is starting at seven o'clock. Shoot for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dan, do we reciprocate on sports with other districts? So you've got somebody who has swam third.